Sorry about that.
You can have time for hair and makeup this morning.
We had it all tested yesterday. Worked just fine.
That's what we deal with.
Sorry, Bob, I should have grabbed you a map when I was.
Well, I, like, Bob had it pulled up on his, the map and all that stuff. And then when you gave me mine back, I couldn't get to it. So it wasn't part of the, I couldn't get to it unless I was just not downloading the whole packet or something. So, but I was reading it off of yours and then, but then.
Sorry, I should have left you with mine. I thought once it downloaded that you had it all.
I didn't make any money.
Looked like you had a lot of fun.
We had a lot of fun, though. A lot of fun. It was awesome. It was pretty cool. I never played anything bigger than the penny slot, so.
Morning, Ben.
You have to see Ron White?
Yep, yep.
I didn't know if you got out before the storm or.
We actually were up at three o'clock. We were out on the road before five to get on the earlier flights. The afternoon flights all got canceled. But we got out in time.
Good for you.
Yes.
How come I couldn't get to that?
Turn the pack. Good.
Did you get all the social media out of here?
No, we were in Vegas.
Oh, you were in Vegas?
We're in Vegas.
Oh, good for you.
We had a blast.
Good.
I just said that up.
Um, Friday morning through about nine thirty last night.
Oh, nice. Good for you.
We, uh.
Fans, I see anyone who's up for that. Sorry.
No, no, I was just calling to ask where I called by to, but I finally got ahold of Josh. Just to see if Clayton was going to be here because I had some stuff from the conference. The afternoon flights got canceled.
Oh, really?
Sorry, we had a ditch here.
We were all stressed.
I know, I know.
I was going to ask you about that. So, did you?
Good morning. Welcome, everyone, to our December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Commissioner meeting. Would you all please stand and join me for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Agenda review. Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today. Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second for the agenda review. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. County ditch twenty-six repairer, Ryan. Good morning. This is a little calmer than our meeting before.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Ryan.
Looks like we've got some repairs to take care of.
Yep, I have a repair report for county ditch twenty-six. This is actually a repair that was approved last year. It did not get done, so now costs have gone up. So I'm seeking approval for the new cost estimate of twenty thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty cents for county ditch twenty-six.
Okay. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing none, all in favors of the repairs, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. That's all you have for us?
That's it.
Thank you.
Tough job there.
A little bit shorter than your last meeting, huh?
A little bit, yes.
Now, y'all should have been here at eight fifteen, then.
Yeah.
All right, community corrections, John. Good morning.
Morning, John.
How are you doing today?
Doing well. One item for you commissioners today. I have the advisory board appointments for two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. I would respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners appoint the following individuals to a two-year term for the Community Corrections Advisory Board. So this term would begin in January two thousand twenty-two and it would end at the end of December two thousand twenty-three. In, in looking at that list, there are no additions at this time from the previous board members that had been participating in the advisory board. We have one subtraction that I'm looking to fill. That was Mr. Bukata Hayes from the Diversity Council. He had moved on to a new position and they had gone through some transition there. They have a new executive director and we had discussed in our last advisory board that I would be reaching out to Mr. Muhammad Al-Sadiq. I just haven't had an opportunity to do that yet. But my plan is to do that, to see if he would be interested. So I'm still looking to fill one kind of vacancy or one where, where we did have somebody from the Diversity Council that left for their new position. So I'll be looking to, to fill that spot there. Otherwise, this is the same group that we've had for the past few years.
All right. Thank you. Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the citizens in the board? Any discussion?
Since I'm put on there by the board, I imagine that's the reason my name's not on there.
Correct, yes. You and the district supervisor for the Department of Corrections, as well as an ex-official member to that group.
All right. Thank you. Kevin?
And then District Four, I believe it's Lee Williams, just a spelling there.
Oh, yeah.
But.
Vee.
Is it Vee?
Yes.
It is Vee.
Vee's been on the board for actually quite a long time.
Okay.
Yes. And she and.
It's a she.
Correct, yes. She and.
It's a she.
It is a she.
It is, yes.
I apologize to Vee. I know Lee Williams from District Four as well, so.
Yes.
Sorry.
Good.
There's a lot of Williamses over there.
Maybe they're married or something.
She's been with us for quite a few years.
Yeah, she has.
Yep, I believe Jerry is her husband.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for the advisory board. Thank you, John. Have a great day.
Thank you, John. Have a great day.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Mark, Property Environmental Services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Mark.
Thank you for having me. I do have three different subjects to cover. First is from the assessment office. It's our annual assessment changes notification. And this would be changes since the close of the two thousand twenty-one County Board of Appeal and Equalization, which closes in June. And so these changes that are outlined in the packet there have occurred since June. And generally speaking, they're a result of special property tax programs where the application deadline comes after the close of the County Board of Appeal and Equalization. So it, as we've done in past years, I'll just briefly talk about some of those changes. The special programs, there is one B, which is a blind disabled benefit, Class Four D, which is low income. And then things like the veterans exclusion, all again, all of those application deadlines come after the close of the board meeting. And then moving on, the next set of items there are those that had gained or lost property tax eligibility. Generally speaking, there is a conversion date that comes after the close of the County Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting as well that affects taxable if they're exempt for the coming year. And classification changes, which generally are speaking, are an upgrade from residential classification to the agricultural classification. If you picture a building site and then someone acquires land next to that, then we can upgrade them for benefits for the coming year. And then we have some tax court, one tax court petition that reached settlement. And then some land changes as a result of right-of-ways acquisitions and such. And then just regular homestead applications that came in since then. One note on the homestead applications is the application deadline changed from December fifteenth to now at the end of the year, December thirty-first, for both regular homestead and special agricultural homestead. So if you don't know anybody that's just purchased a property or anything like that, there's still time yet this year to apply a homestead, which is legislative changes last summer. Other than that, we would be requesting that you just make this a part of your official minutes. You don't need to approve by action because these are special programs and such have already been approved. But statute does require us to bring it before the board for recognition.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to the next item.
Do we want to approve the?
We'll just note it in the minutes as an informational item since there's no action required.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I think in the past I've gotten confused about that, too, so I apologize. The next item would be our permit fee schedule. If you recall, we had a work session in early November to review the fees. Going back a year ago, we revised quite a bit of our fee schedule to bring that more up to date and current. One of the areas that was not approached at that time was the wetland application fees because we wanted to gather more information and make some changes there. So as Dane and John are covered at the work session there, there's, generally speaking, the most changes are coming out of that wetland area. But there's also some additional ones with the increase in shoreline alteration fees and then also the type four septic permit fee because we contract with West Seaco County for that work. And then an increase for mining conditional use permit there based on the time spent. What we would be looking for here is approval by action then for the proposed two thousand twenty-two fee schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the fee schedule. Had a good work session on this a month ago, maybe. Had some good discussion, a lot of questions and comments at that point. But if there's any other questions or comments right now, we would hear them. Okay, if not, I got a motion and a second for the new fee structure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. And then lastly, we have our department committee appointments. This year, we have no reappointments that are due for the recycling committee. You might see some of those in the future. But we do have two members of our planning commission and board of adjustment that would need to be reappointed. Mr. Bill Anderson and Mr. Joe Xmintek. They've both been on the board for a number of years and served in their capacity very well.
I'll move the reappointment.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for Bill and Joe. Any discussion? I will just add that the planning commission and the board of adjustment meeting commission we have now is doing a great job. They are very active. They ask a lot of questions and they are here to do, do the job. I mean, I don't think we've had to cancel a meeting because of a quorum issue, so hats off to all of them. All right, got a motion and a second for the planning commission members. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Board of adjustments?
Sorry, yep, Board of adjustments, same applicants there, Bill and Joe.
Yep.
So for the same duration there.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second for Bill and Joe and ditto the same comments I made just a minute ago. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Holidays.
Yes, you, too. And Ryan Tilges, good morning.
Morning, Ryan. It's like that Price is Right, Come On Down. Is that what you're doing?
Ryan's got a whole bunch of stuff for us to plow.
I do have relatively busy agenda here today, so.
It's quite all right.
Yeah, when you're saying the price is right, it might not.
You know, I was in an auction for this stellar Christmas tie, but it got too rich for my blood, so I am wearing my other Christmas tie.
That was an amazing Christmas tie, though.
It was something. I was telling my staff about that this morning. They got a chuckle. So, anyway.
They, they had a tie, or they had me auction off my tie at the Transportation and Infrastructure Planning Committee, or the Committee, Policy Committee. And it actually pulled in a hundred and ten dollars for the AMC Foundation. So, I don't know if I'll.
Hope you didn't pay a hundred and fifty for it.
Well, I, no, it was just a regular tie for me, you know, so, I mean, somebody talked me into it. I told the guy that he's got to bring it next year to.
Auction it off again.
Re-auction it off, so I think it should be a yearly event, so.
Nice. All right, Ryan, go ahead.
First action item is consideration of final payment for state project zero zero seven oh ninety, zero zero five. This is for the county-stateed highway sixteen, Stolzman Road Trail Project that was completed by Nielsen Blacktopping. The final contract amount is three hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-two cents with a final contract payment amount of three thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-five cents. I would recommend approval of the final payment to Nielsen Blacktopping.
I'll so move the payment.
Second, Stolzman Road.
Got a motion and a second for the final on the Stolzman Road Trail. Any discussion, questions, or comments?
It turned out awesome.
Yes.
Trail turned out amazing, so, no, good job.
All right. Hearing no discuss, or hearing no other comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for the trail.
All right. Action item number two is consideration of bids for a new two thousand twenty-two crawler dozer. This is using the Blue Earth County COVID relief funds to address the public works department's deferred equipment list. This is replacement of a nineteen ninety-nine Caterpillar L G P dozer unit. We received two bids, one from Caterpillar, one from John Deere. The Caterpillar actually had a lower upfront price. Again, we specify these with horsepower, weight, and lots of different specifications. By, by a very narrow margin over John Deere, the Caterpillar is one hundred and sixty-two thousand fifty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. And then John Deere was one hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars sixty-four cents. However, on the trade-in of a Caterpillar, nineteen ninety-nine Caterpillar dozer, Ziegler Caterpillar was considerably lower than R D O John Deere from forty-seven four twenty-five to sixty-three thousand on the trade from John Deere. So total purchase price on the John Deere is considerably lower at one hundred thousand dollars two hundred and ninety-six, one hundred thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-four cents. In addition to the lower price that was provided by John Deere on the total deal, they also provided their U.S. Buy American requirements and their percentages. This unit is sixty-three point two percent U.S. content with a hundred percent structural steel coming from the United States. Caterpillar failed to submit the Buy America provisions and the, where it was built. So we tend to consider that an incomplete bid, coupled with them being higher. We didn't chase it any further because I would recommend the purchase of the John Deere.
I would move to approve the R D O.
Got a second. Got a motion and a second to buy a new Caterpillar. Any discussion? All in favor, say, oh, go ahead, Ryan.
Just going to throw out that the Buy American was something that was, there was loose guidance on the COVID relief funds. It's not something that we include in all of our bids.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, I don't think I've heard that before.
I did want to clarify that yesterday. This was something that we put on the, the deferred equipment purchases this year that we're using the COVID relief money on because as we dug into the fund source, there was discussion on, on giving consideration to Buy American. However, there wasn't real clear guidance on it, so we came up with some provisions to try to determine how much of the machine was assembled, where it was assembled, and how much was really coming from the United States so we could give it consideration as a little bit of a coverage.
So is that a reason for us to go with a higher bid, slightly higher bid if we wanted to?
That's a good question, and unfortunately, there's not real clear guidance on that. We, we looked all over and I know Bob was looking at it, too, as well as finance. And it never really clearly stated. Now, I think if we were down to maybe a five thousand dollar swing or something like that, or ten thousand, I guess wherever the board's tolerance is for what risk we would want to bear. Yeah, it could be, I suppose, a reason to go with a slightly higher bid to get a higher Made in America percentage.
But if someone doesn't return, turn in the documents for it, that's a reason to throw out their bid.
And I, I can't substantiate, but I was informed by what I deemed to be a credible source that the Caterpillar's actually made overseas and that's why they didn't.
They probably didn't even disclose it and.
And in this case, it didn't make no difference.
No.
Because the John Deere was a lower price anyway. Why John Deere would give us a higher trade-in for a Caterpillar than Caterpillar itself doesn't make sense to me. But I guess they know what they're doing in their own business.
That's the benefit of how we do this is that we do get the, the competitive trade-in prices versus just straight buying off of the, the state bid pricing, so we're able to at least leverage that.
There you go.
Well, good. And we'll probably see more of those bids, I would imagine, in the future, so. All right, any other discussions or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries to buy the new Caterpillar from R D O.
John Deere.
Or John Deere.
Thank you.
From R D O.
Yes, correct. Action item number three is consideration of a parking resolution for state aid project zero zero seven, six oh seven, zero eleven, which is for county-stateed highway seven reconstruction in Mapleton. This is the, an identical resolution to the one that the city of Mapleton has already passed. It's restricting parking on Casas Seven from the south project limits, which is a little less than a half mile south of the current city limits at Porker Street to the intersection of Garfield Street in the city of Mapleton. Garfield is about a block north of the southern city limits, current southern city limits of Mapleton. I would recommend approval of the resolution.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the parking resolution. Any questions or comments?
Reading the, the explanation, it makes perfect sense why there were more parking there. The road's not made for it.
Correct.
Okay, got a motion and a second. No other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Action item number four is consideration of approval of the annual report of the Parks Department. And this is for the year end two thousand twenty. The reason this is coming to you so, so late, and I apologize for coming so late, but we had obviously some pretty significant challenges with our Parks accountant position from one person resigning after coming back from maternity leave, resigning, bringing in another employee that was not a fit to another new employee. And that's a very specialized kind of base of information. So fortunately, Pam Han, our retired highway accountant, has been in the office helping us doing some training for our new staff. And she's actually the one that put this together for us and enabled our new staff to pick up with it next year, so. Very thankful to Pam for all of her hard work, coming out of retirement a day a week to help us out and put this together. We did pare this down significantly from previous year's versions. If you may recall, there was a ton of financials and things that were generated from UNIS. And as I reviewed it with administration and Bob and I talked about, is there really necessity in regurgitating all of this information when it's easily accessible? A lot of it's already in the budget, so you've seen it in one form or another. So I wanted to try to condense this and make it a little bit quicker. So I'll hit on kind of some of the highlights from the park operations. Obviously, we were impacted significantly by COVID and we had to restrict the campsites. However, we had a fairly robust mobile and tent camping with six thousand one hundred and eighty during the two thousand twenty season. That was approximately sixty-five nights of refunds and gifts for people that had COVID. Revenue collected at Bray, Daley, Duck, and Rapid安 Williams totaled one hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars seventy-eight cents, which was a decrease of twenty-two thousand three hundred and four from the previous year. But again, in, in perspective, that's actually a pretty good year, given that we had to restrict the campsites. And two thousand nineteen was also a fairly robust camping year. So as we paged through the document, very familiar with the map of our parks, discussion of some of the park system improvements that were completed in year two thousand twenty. I know, I know we've reviewed those already, so I'll kind of gloss over those. And then we have some of the more critical financial reports on page, labeled page one. It's probably like page four of the actual PDF document. We have the two thousand twenty statistics with the total revenue that I previously cited of a little over one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Six thousand one hundred and eighty total camping nights, two thousand two hundred and fifty online reservations were made. Eighty percent of the campers came from outside of Blue Earth County. We did not do any boat rentals in two thousand twenty or two thousand twenty-one due to COVID. I'm not sure if that'll return or not. That'd be something for future discussion as the caretakers, some really are opposed to doing it. It's for the minimal return, it's, it's a lot of headache and people just kind of let the boats float off and don't return them. Poor, poor care by the public, I guess, might lead to the demise of those rentals. And then sixty-five shelter reservations.
Seems like a pretty decent year, actually.
You're right, absolutely. As we flip through, there's a summary of the financial statement, including the assets, liabilities, and accounts receivable, accounts payable, changes in fund balance, statement of cash flows. And then as we proceed, page seven, as it's labeled at the bottom of the document, is our two thousand twenty changes in budget versus actual. If you look at our excess of revenues over or under our expenditures, obviously, we didn't, I'm sorry, we came in a little bit over actually what was anticipated, I believe. And really what I think is the most telling is our charts that are on page eight when we look at our cash revenue sources. The local revenue, which is obviously, I believe, our, the county portion of the budget. And then our operations, et cetera, how it's broken out. The expenditures are, are again, more telling because you get into the operations being the most significant chunk, as well as the maintenance of these parks. I, you know, nearly eighty-five, ninety percent of the budget, equipment is four percent and construction is twenty percent. So, yes, seventy-six percent of the budget is maintenance and operations. And then just to wrap it up, on page ten, camping reservation revenues. There's a bar chart that shows even for two thousand twenty, we had some big years in seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. But two thousand twenty still beat two thousand sixteen, so we had a pretty solid year, given the fact that we had to block out, I think, twenty-one campsites. So I would imagine what it'd be if, between Bray and Daley combined. What it would be had we both of them. Obviously, boat sale revenues fell flat. Wood sales fell shy as well. But some additional financial documents throughout, but with that being said, I would recommend approval of the two thousand twenty annual parks report.
Will do approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the parks report? Any questions or comments?
My only comment is our parks are a diamond in the rough for Blue Earth County. They're gorgeous. They're taking care of your staff, doing an amazing job.
Very well attended. I was surprised to see eighty percent outside of Blue Earth County, though. That's amazing.
I tell you, you, Bray and Daley for campsites are just, I mean, people want to come there and they love, love the parks. And for those of us that do camp, you know, understand why. They're, it's a nice park to camp at, so.
All right. Any other comments? Good job on the report. Thank you for the extra staff coming in and dealing with that, so. If there's no other questions, I got a motion and a second for the parks report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ryan.
Absolutely. Some project updates for discussion. County-stateed highway one from nine to ninety, the south end at Casas Nine has been paved and is open to traffic. The section that we call the chute, which is from one hundred and ninety-third to one hundred and ninety-fifth, will remain closed for the winter due to the conditions. That was a very active construction site. It's actually, still has work underway. G S I is still working on soil nail walls. We anticipate they'll work through this week into next week. And then they'll probably shut things down for the year right before Christmas. So they were able to work up until almost New Year.
Wow.
Because that was closed, Mathwoods did quite a bit of storm sewer even into November until conditions were no longer fit. But that's a very muddy area. Drainage is very challenging until we get the road put back together. And truthfully, the detours that are in place, people can go to the west through Rapid安 to thirty-three to get up to ninety. Or they can take the other detour that's posted via thirty-five to sixteen that'll spring them to ninety. So two good routes to get to Good Thunder, from Good Thunder to Mankato. The Casas Seven Bridge replacement, the guardrail final. The Kasaw 7 bridge replacement, the guardrail finally was arrived in our last meeting. Material delays are, I feel like I just need to do a dartboard with all of the different materials and we just throw darts on what's next, it's not going to show up. It arrived and was installed, the road was open on November 23rd, so just in the nick of time, nice bridge replacement project that we were able to squeeze into the fall. County State Highway 40, kind of 151 and 169 bridge replacements, those are also all funded. Staff are finalizing the approach grading plans and bidding documents, and we anticipate opening bids in late January and bringing those to the board in February for approval. County State Highway 7 in Mapleton, hundred percent plans have been submitted to State Aid. We would anticipate advertising and bidding should follow early in 2022, following the minimal right-of-way acquisitions necessary for the job. 10 and 72 in Vernon Center, we just wrapped up ninety percent plan review on the city consultant engineer, SEH, plan set for the entire project, which our, our roads are probably twenty to twenty-five percent of their entire project, so we reviewed our components of it. Those should be submitted to State Aid for approval soon, and we would anticipate advertising and bidding will follow early in 2022. Again, the city's consultant engineer is going to be taking the lead on that project. County State Highway 11 from 20 to Minnesota Highway 68, plans are also progressing very nicely there. We're anticipating that we should get the plans into State Aid for approval by the end of the year. Right-of-way acquisitions are progressing nicely, but that's a six-mile-long project, so Jack's got a lot of folks to meet with out there. It's going fairly smoothly, actually, so we're anticipating the coming months, right-of-way acquisition year's completion will begin the bidding process. County State Highway 12 from 26 East to Kasaw 2, Bolton Make just sent ninety percent plans to us yesterday for review, so again, we're in a really good place with a lot of these plans being at ninety-plus percent. And right-of-ways acquisition will begin after the New Year. We're going to actually put Ryan on that and give him an opportunity to kind of go out on his own and buy necessary right-of-way, as he's been training under Jack to do that. So we're hoping to, again, have that one out the bed very early in 2022, as the right-of-way comes together. We've been coordinating quite a bit with the city of Mankato on impacts of the airport due to not only horizontally, but we've also got to consider vertically where the flight paths are, even power pole relocations becoming an issue, so we're working through that process. County State Highway 16 from the La Sura River to 90, plan development continues. It has not been a high, high priority, but staff are, after they wrap up the 11 plans due, we're going to actually put both designers on that and keep that one moving forward. Kasaw 13 from 169 to 1, that's a 2023 project, but project development, you know, starts years in advance as we put these into our capital plans and then do some of the work that we've done already, which included aerial surveys, wetland delineations that we typically have done by an external firm because it's more efficient or it's specialized work. We did send out a request for proposals for professional design services to three firms, and that includes design of the road and the bridges. There's actually a pretty adequate-sized bridge on that road, as well as a large box covered that's technically a bridge, so knowing that we were going to have both of those, we selected firms for proposals that have specialty in both bridge and road design. And we anticipate getting those back, I believe, the end of the week, they're due actually, to evaluate and bring probably something forward in January for board approval if it exceeds our threshold, otherwise, under our procurement policy, we would just move forward with that. On 26, from Kasaw 57, which is North Riverfront Drive to Minnesota Highway 22, same thing, proposals are due back from consulting firms at the end of this week, and we would anticipate getting those moving forward for design of that. One of the challenges on that road is we are incorporating a trail on preferably the south side of the road, I believe, and how do we obtain connectivity to the Sakata Trail? So as you know, if you recall, 26 that runs along Wicker Sham as it goes down the hill and runs into North Riverfront Drive, there's quite a topographical challenge, but we did coordinate with the city and we think there's a way that we could run a kind of a local connector with an on-street system and do some advisory signage via Country Club Drive down to, I don't know, blank on the name of the road, but there's a connector that would bring them in on the south side of the golf course, right by our roundabout on North Riverfront Drive and Highway 14, where there'd be a protected crossing at the roundabout. So working on connectivity, and then it would also carry to the east where people could cross Highway 22 and then use the underpass to connect to the Sakata Trail, so we think that'd be a really nice community amenity to have in the long term. Transportation Improvement Plan, 2022 to 2026, this is our, previously we've called it our Capital Improvement Plan, however, sometimes that's misleading because it doesn't have all of our capital, it doesn't have our equipment, et cetera, so trying to align it with acronyms that are used by the state, which is a tip. With that being said, we've selected the next five years' construction projects, following, getting feedback from our local communities, our cities, and other project partners, and trying to align them in a fashion that is consistent with what we have available for resources and with project expectations. So with that being said, I would anticipate having a draft of the Transportation Improvement Plan for the five-year plan available by mid to late January. Because we've had such historically poor turnout at our public open house meetings for these types of, you know, capital or transportation improvement plans, people really don't show up until, you know, they're, you're in their front yard with a project.
Yeah.
So with that being said, I think we're going to go to more of an online model, posting this online, soliciting public feedback, giving people more opportunities over a longer period of time to provide feedback, and then hopefully having a final plan ready for approval by spring.
Sounds like a good plan, and, and your comment is correct, and it's, it's what you do. I mean, until I got interested in local politics, I didn't go to any meetings until it was something that affected me, and that's, that's just what we have to deal with, so appreciate taking the extra effort and trying to get those projects out in front of people.
Absolutely. One item that's been sitting on the shelf for quite some time is the 2005 Transportation Plan, and Commissioners, I, Commissioner Brunder and Commissioner Landkammer were both on the board when this document was originally developed and approved, and this is a county-wide transportation plan, and it has value, however, it's become significantly outdated, being all the way back to 2005. And we've obviously had five-year updates of MayTAPs that then transitioned to the MAPLE Long Range Transportation Plan, and now we have the 2020, to 2020, 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan update for the MAPLE. So we've got a really sound planning document for the MAPLE limits, and we, we have a very outdated planning document for the rest of Blue Earth County. So as I started thinking about this a little bit more, and, and the advantages of it, you know, from understanding what we're facing now and what our future transportation challenges are, to really getting a better understanding of what are some of our growth trends, not only around Mankato, but in our outlying communities, and getting stakeholder engagement from, from industry to local communities and state, local, township, cities, you name it, getting feedback from all of those different project partners, as well as what are our future system needs, and how can we overlay and integrate that with, with some of the elements of the MAPLE Long Range Transportation Plan, to have a really county-wide systematic document, and it also is a great, a great tool for documenting our maintenance practices, as well as our operational practices, as well as our access control and all of those other things that we practice within our department. And in addition to that, it really develops a strong rationale and helps us with future funding applications if we're seeking external funding opportunities. The other benefit of this is that it would also provide us with a future list of candidate projects for the local option sales tax, going through a strongly vetted process that receives public feedback, where we'd have looked at updating that projects list. So with that being said, I'd like to, in 2022, utilize some of our budgeted funds that we have in our, in our transportation program for consultant fees, and the budget would run, depending on what we're asking for, probably between a hundred to $150,000 to update this 2005 Transportation Plan. I think that'd be a strong document, and then if we're more consistent with updates, obviously the cost would go down with updates, because this one's going to require kind of a complete reboot at this point. However, I do, I do think there's value to it, you know, if you receive one external funding application because a project is in here, it always helps when we're doing funding applications, and I've been on both sides of the fence. I've been the one applying for the funds, and I've been the one reviewing different grant applications for different federal or state grants, as I said, on different committees, and when you see that it's documented and that there's need for it in a, in a transportation plan or safer houses, schools, whatever, there's a lot of value to that for the local agency, so I, I wanted to get feedback from the board on, on an update for the transportation plan.
I certainly don't have a problem with that, and I can understand why if you see that on a plan already, that the county or the city or whoever invested a hundred thousand dollars to put that plan together or update it, I would think that that would carry a lot when you're trying to give out some grant money, so we could, if you, if you got one grant down the road, it would cover the cost of that, plus it'd be a product that would be usable in the future. So I, I don't have a problem with that.
I agree. It's due to review.
Absolutely. Especially seeing the, the MAPLE kind of constantly being updated. Okay, well, that's something we'll work on as the New Year unfurls and kind of develop, and I'll keep you up to date as we see those proposals and the process begins. Last but not least, DNR Funding Opportunities Discussion, I believe that I provided just the DNR website link. However, there's several grants that are available right now, the first being the Outdoor Recreation Grant Program, this is the same grant that we used to purchase the guaranteed sand and gravel properties collaboratively with the city of Mankato, that's now Red Jacket Valley Park. This is the Increase in Enhanced Outdoor Recreation Facilities and Parks Grants, fund up to fifty percent of the eligible costs, maximum amount is $300,000. Applications are due March 31st, 2022. Potential funding for this grant could be to be utilized for the Bray Park Campground Expansion, if that's something that the board was wanting to move forward on that.
Just going to state that, I was thinking, hey, that sounds like an awesome grant for that, the Bray Park Expansion. All I have to do is convince the rest of my board that's a great idea.
So it's, it's an opportunity that's available, and I, you know, whether, I don't know if I need an answer right now, but as, we could, if you want to discuss it now or later amongst yourselves, and...
When do you need to have that in?
Well, it's due March 31st, however, it's a pretty substantial application, and I don't even know if we'd tackle it in-house or if we'd find somebody to help us with it. We, we have the ability to do it in-house, or it's, do we have the time to do it in-house? And we've had people help us with these before, but I would venture to say you need a month to a month and a half to work on it, so probably by early January, an indication if this is something that the board wanted us to pursue for a future project. And I'm sorry, I did fail to put the fiscal year that this is for, but it's, it's out there, I think it's 2024 or 2025 fiscal year.
For the project to be done?
I believe so, yeah, it's a couple of years out.
And you're thinking the expansion at this point, or it could be opened up for anything? Because you have to have a specific project, correct, or?
Right, we would have to have a specific project and have to have estimate, and that's part of it too, is we'd have to cost estimate, and we'd have to update what we had, estimation of what the project cost would be and what the scope would be, so that we can vividly explain it, so. The other ones that are available, Natural and Scenic Area Program, this is to increase, protect, and enhance natural and scenic areas. It provides up to fifty percent of the cost of acquisition of these scenic areas. There's really no current project priority that comes to my mind for this one. Federal Recreational Trail Program, to encourage maintenance and development of motorized and non-motorized diversified trails, seventy-five percent of the cost, up to $150,000 for trails and $75,000 for equipment, no current project priority. I did send this to Josh and Chad to look over for potential equipment purchases, to see if there's a specialized piece, maybe tree trimming, et cetera, that we could utilize this grant to purchase or to help us with. Regional Grant Trail Program, promote development of regionally significant trails outside of the seven-county metro, seventy-five percent cost share, up to $300,000, again, no current project priority comes to my mind. The last one is the Local Trail Connections Grant Program, this was actually where the program that we utilized with the Transportation Alternatives Funds to get the funding to cover the entire cost of the Kasaw 16 Trail from Stadium all the way up to Mankato West High School at Pleasant Street. In that circumstance, the TA covered, I believe, eighty percent of the total project cost from federal dollars, and we use the DNR to supplement the remaining twenty percent. The program is for short trail connections between residences and desirable locations, provides up to seventy-five percent of the project cost or up to a maximum of $250,000. The potential future funding source, coupled with TA, this would be a great funding source for the Kasaw 6 Trail, the Lily Lake subdivision in the city of Lake Crystal. I did share this with city administrator, and the city's just not quite ready yet to go into funding applications. I, I would anticipate that by next year, we'll be in pretty good shape. They're kind of wrapping up public feedback and feasibility report, which are great documents to have to pave the way towards future funding applications. So I would anticipate next year, when the Transportation Alternatives and this comes out, we start hitting it fairly hard and trying to obtain funding, and even if we have to maybe advance fund it a year and get the money the following year, we can kind of play that shell game too upon the project, so. Wanted to at least bring all those to the board's attention, there are some good opportunities, and that, most of these do arise yearly, so it's not to say that if we don't pursue it this year, that we couldn't pursue it in future years. So with that, that ends my report, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, I don't know when our next work session is, we don't have one scheduled anymore this year, January?
It's middle of January is the next one, but that is pretty full, and we actually are looking at February 1st as a follow-on, just because we have some stuff stacking up.
Now, we can have some discussion about this and kind of keep you in the loop, and I mean, obviously, every time we can go for a grant and receive it, that's a benefit to the citizens of Blue Earth County, get some more amenities for DNR, so we'll keep it on our radar.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Any other questions for Ryan this morning?
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ryan.
All right, have a rest of the day.
You too, maybe see you this afternoon.
Yes.
And if we don't catch you this afternoon, you have a good Christmas.
Yes, Merry Christmas as well. I think I'll be down this afternoon, hopefully.
Okay. All right, Patrick. Good morning.
Morning, Patrick.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. The report speaks for itself, if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. Things have been fairly busy with the number of overdose deaths and a couple of other homicides, and the commitments are up, as you see, which isn't surprising with everything going on and the mental health issues and whatnot, so I don't have anything else in particular to report, other than what is in the report, so if you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Pat on the report? I appreciate the report, Pat.
Yep, as always.
Nice to be able to look at it and see what you got going on, and court filing or court dates and stuff are getting caught up at this point, or?
We're still, there's a couple of things along those lines. Actually, we've been pretty lucky compared to, well, I'm not going to say lucky, we've just continued to plow through where other counties, you know, I've heard the, the stories where they have over eight hundred felonies that are just hanging out there with nothing because they couldn't get the judges to put things on the calendar, right? There's various counties that are using the, the ARPA funds to hire additional attorneys to try to catch up on the backlog. The state court for each, the state court administration went through the backlog for each county, and essentially, for the next year, we basically have to dispose of, each judge has to dispose of about four cases every three months, more than what they normally would for us to be back in on track, so we're very fortunate in that respect. You know, we were one of the guinea pig counties when they first opened up, then the, the second time, we amended the COVID preparedness plan so we could have two jury trials going on at the same time. We've had a number of jury trials in the last few months, so things have been moving along fairly smoothly there. I'll be curious, the Supreme Court sent out a, a survey to many stakeholders to determine what should remain in-person, what should potentially stay virtual and whatnot, so it'll be interesting to see, because until, you know, some of these people get in the courthouse in front of the courtroom, they don't have any incentive to deal with the cases in any fruitful manner, so, but we've been very fortunate that the judges have just continued to put things on the calendar and move things through.
Good, good to hear. Any questions for Pat or comments?
Got nothing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
All right, that brings us down to administration.
First item, Mr. Chair, is the County Boardman. First item, Mr. Chair, is the county board minutes for November 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for the minutes.
Next are the bills for the three weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any discussion, questions or comments that haven't been answered already? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 10 in your packet. It is the Human Resources Department Agenda. We have one action item for the board's consideration today, and that is authorization for the chair and the county administrator to sign an agreement with the law enforcement labor services local 440. This is our dispatch unit. This is a two-year agreement for 2022 and 2023. As the board is fairly aware, this agreement does include salary adjustments of $1.50 per hour each of those two years. So doing a flat dollar increase rather than a percentage increase to adjust some of our lower band and grade classifications to recognize some of the market changes that are currently happening. Some of the other elements in this agreement, some language items around the use of vacation time during probationary period. We started to recognize a fair amount of administrative hassle, I would say, when we hire new employees that already have some vacation plans or have some need to be away from the office. They're earning vacation time, but our past practice had been not to allow them to use that vacation time until after a six-month period. We're now changing language to allow those staff to utilize their vacation time. But should they choose to leave our organization before that probationary period is up, we would not pay out any accrued leave there. So we're trying to implement that kind of across the county, just to recognize that as we're hiring people in this current market, we want to have some flexibility available for those new employees. We also changed some language that acknowledges that, especially in these 24/7 environments, we're having to call people in on short notice when people are out. COVID has certainly been a factor in some of that. And so changing some of the language to compensate them at an overtime rate, should they get called in with less than 12 hours' notice. We also trying to bring some consistency to our agreements. We had some funeral leave where there were different family members that had different benefit provisions and different contracts. So we're trying to just make those consistent across different bargaining groups. One of the language changes that also has some fiscal implications is the insurance language relative to health savings account contributions. We had previously contributed as the employer $1,350 for single coverage and $2,700 for family coverage. We're increasing those amounts to $1,400 and $2,800, which represents roughly half of the deductible for our high deductible health plan that we offer. And then lastly, we did make a slight change to the shift differential for this group. They had previously received it from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. They requested we move that back to 5:00 PM to 7:00 AM, which is consistent with our deputies. So those are the changes in this contract that we're recommending approval by the board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second for the local 440 labor enforcement. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for the dispatch agreement.
Under information items, then, we have initiated recruitment for a senior account clerk due to resignation that was on a previous agenda. Then we had a change of an employment status for a dispatcher from part-time to full-time, and initiated recruitment to refill that part-time position. Also, a change of employment status from on-call to a part-time library clerk, and initiated then recruitment to refill that on-call position. We did fill a care coordinator in our public health area in human services, as well as filled a human service supervisor position for our regional mental health initiative. We also filled a position in our IT department for a security administrator, and then hired a correctional officer in our jail, as well as a part-time property environmental resource specialist in that department. We also promoted an individual from our mapping and GIS technician role to a business analyst in our IT department. We did receive a resignation of an eligibility specialist in human services, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. And then we had the completion of employment of a senior environmental health specialist. A lot of activity, again, in our HR department, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Any questions or comments on the items?
Good to see that we're getting some of these places filled.
Continues to be a challenge, especially in those correctional officer positions, but we have made some progress there, and so hope to continue that.
All right.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 11 in your packet. It is a memo regarding intoxicating liquor licenses for 2022. We're seeking board approval of the renewal of the following on-sale intoxicating liquor licenses for Indian Island Winery, Morgan Creek Vineyard, Mount Cato, Terrace View Golf Course, both for the Minneopa Golf Course and Terrace View, as well as the Windmill in Mapleton.
I'll move the liquor license there. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Pretty routine annual license?
Pretty much.
If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for the liquor license.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 12 in your packet. It is information regarding the opioid settlement. This is a nationwide settlement with opioid distributors that has the potential to bring nearly $300 million to the state of Minnesota over the next 18 years. Minnesota counties are uniquely impacted by the opioid epidemic and substance use disorder, and the Association of Minnesota Counties advocated strongly on our behalf that a large portion of the settlement funds should be provided to local governments to combat the epidemic. The agreement that has been reached between the counties and the Attorney General's Office agreed and provides 75% of the funds received for counties, so that we can provide needed abatement and remediation programs around the state. There was a panel of experts that developed a comprehensive list of future opioid abatement and remediation programs for consideration by local governments. The remaining 25% will be paid to the state and go into a special opioid abatement account. I will tell you that a legislative change is needed for counties to receive these funds directly, rather than going through a state allocation formula that currently exists, and then coming to counties. We do anticipate this legislative change to occur, which would allow then the funds to be distributed to counties by April of next year. While the amount that Blue Earth County will receive hasn't been determined at this time, there are a number of steps that must be completed in order for the county to receive the settlement payments. Those steps include the passage of a resolution agreeing to the interstate agreement, and authorizing staff to opt-in to the national settlement. The Association of Minnesota Counties and the Attorney General's Office are encouraging counties to pass the resolution by December 17th, to allow the processing time needed as the deadline to sign on to the national settlement is January 2nd of '22. Staff have prepared a resolution that's included in the packet that supports the state subdivision agreement, opts into the multi-state settlements, and authorizes the county administrator to execute documents for participation by the county. So we bring that for your consideration today.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion, questions, comments?
This was well brought out during our conference, discussed a lot. Thanks to Bob for being on that board that worked on this.
I was on one little committee that provided some input.
Oh, don't put yourself very modest. Modesty will get you nowhere. But this is an amazing settlement for the state of Minnesota, for the counties and local government cities, being that 75% is going to local government instead of going through the state to get here. It's going to alleviate a lot of that paperwork that we would have to go through, kind of like the ARPA funds that came through. So I would move that we accept this.
We got a motion and a second.
We already have one, yeah.
That's right, though. Yeah, it sounds like a good program, and we don't have any idea how much our cut will be. But I would imagine we'll move that to human services somewhere. What would we do with the money after we do?
Well, I've actually asked the deputy county administrator to lead kind of a multi-departmental discussion around how best to utilize these funds. We had some initial email conversation just in terms of what are people thinking. And I would say the consistent response from departments is remediation, prevention, sorts of efforts. But I think we need, once we know the amount, get all those players in a room, talk about how best to utilize these funds. The city of Mankato will be receiving funds. How can we partner with them?
Sure.
Maybe more of a regional thing could come. So I think we have a lot of work to do to kind of figure out, once we know how much we are receiving, how best to utilize those funds going forward.
And again, will the small cities receive small amounts of funds?
It's only cities over 30,000 that were eligible, so.
I think that's why it's important we coordinate, not only those small cities, but with Mankato and maybe regionally and things like this. I would just add that I think this is evident to the value of AMC and working together to have all the counties moving forward with this, and did this type of settlement.
Agreed. Any other comments?
It's the best route.
Yep. Take. I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for the resolution.
Item number 13 in the packet is the November financial status report. We are getting to the end of our fiscal year. We have one more month. You'll see our total revenues sit at just under $121 million compared to expenses of about $105 million. This particular financial status report does include the second half local property tax levy. So you'll see that line is at about 99% of our budget. So we hope to collect a few more overdue taxes here in the month of December to get us up to that full 100% budget. Our interest on investments is both the interest as well as the market value changes. You see that this hasn't been a robust year in that regard. We actually have kind of gone the other direction, which is disappointing to see, but the market has been a little bit unstable. Terms of expenses, we're sitting at a year-to-date of 92.2% of our budget. So departments have done a nice job in terms of managing their expenses within the budgeted amounts. Under the enterprise fund, which is our Ponderosa landfill, you'll see total revenues there are $4.1 million against expenses of $1.8 million. So a very positive outlook there, mostly due to not having to make investments in additional cells at the landfill, and kind of a lower machinery cost at this point in the year. The second page shows our cash and investment balances. You'll see at the top, our total available funds sit at $73.6 million, which is above our six-month operating needs. That number will come down in the last month of the year, obviously, and that obviously has to carry us until next May, when first half taxes will be due. Towards the bottom, then, the total county funds sit at just under $135 million. I'd certainly be willing to answer any questions the board might have.
I don't have any questions, Bob, but it's good news to see the local levy at that percentage. You know, when COVID hit, we all had huge concerns about not giving our, getting our property taxes. And, you know, it just hasn't come to fruition, which is good.
Yeah, it's very encouraging that all of our residents, businesses, farmers, seem to be in a position where they're able to meet those obligations, and we hope that continues well into the future.
Any other questions or comments on the financial report?
Good report.
Well, I think that is all we have on here, except for the committee reports. Bob, unless you have something else to bring up?
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All righty. At this point, we'll start with committee reports. And Vance, I think I'll start with you today.
Well, our last board meeting was November 23rd. On November 30th, I did a storytime at the Blue Earth County Library with my wife. On December 1st, I did a coffee with commissioners in the morning. We had a department head meeting. And then I had an AMC Transportation Policy Committee Zoom. On December 2nd, I had a South Central Towards Zero Death meeting, a library board meeting. I attended a Hanukkah celebration at Jackson Park. And then we had a township meeting that night at Lake Crystal. I think all of us were there, weren't they? Mark, you were there, too, weren't you?
Township? Nope. Mark wasn't there.
No, I wouldn't take that, no.
December 5th, I had an AMC Policy Committee meeting and board meeting at the annual conference. That was Sunday. We had our, December 6th, we continued with AMC Annual Conference. I was chair of Transportation Infrastructure, so I led that policy committee. On December 7th, we continued with our AMC Annual Conference, and our library, Blue Earth County Library, received an award that all of us stood up for. And we were pretty proud of our library. It was pretty awesome. December 8th, I continued with AMC Conference. December 9th, I had a Transportation Alliance Board Meeting by Zoom, and 169 Executive Board Meeting by Zoom. December 10th, I had a State Transportation Plans Policy Advisory Committee via Zoom. And then on the 13th, I had, yesterday, I had a TDS Arts and Cultural Heritage Foundation monthly meeting. And that was the end of my report.
All right. Thank you, Vance. Kevin?
In addition to the Township Association meeting that Mr. Schoenberg talked about, I participated in Environmental and Natural Resources Policy Committee meetings on November 24th, and then again on December 5th. I was part of the Eagle Creek meeting on the Rapidan Dam on the 30th. Department heads on December 1st. I participated in the Green Sea Forum on December 12th, as well as a ditch 56 planning meeting on December 3rd, AMC Conference. Has been... AMC Conference has been mentioned. Had calls and conversations on the Vernon Center Main Street project, our short-term rental ordinance, and ditch 36 and ditch 56, ditch 36, which we talked about this morning. That completes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Mark?
Okay, mine, we did have after the board meeting, the 23rd, let's see, it was on December 1st, did have a general government, a virtual meeting, getting ready for AMC. And then we did have a department head meeting then after, and then Friday, the 3rd of November, had Semrick's Joint Power Board. And then we had our AMC Conference, Monday through Wednesday, general government and all the different committees, and of course, our award that the library received. And December 8th, did have a virtual MICA meeting that was interesting and of course, getting ready for our January annual. And then had an update on legislative issues at that point. And then this morning, did have the joint 36 repair meeting. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mark. After the last board meeting, myself, Bob, and Josh went up to the veterans coin distribution for our employees, which was a nice event, and was well received by the employees of Blue Earth County, from my understanding. Michael's got the coins for all the veterans that served since 2001, I believe. And so he's been distributing them throughout the community and then to our, to our employees also. We did manage to give one to someone in the system personally for me, so that was nice to acknowledge their service. Then I had an ECB legislative meeting, all just updates, nothing new to vote on, getting ready for the '22 session. Department head was mentioned, I made it to that. Planning and zoning, we had two items to discuss. They'll both be coming in front of us next month. The Great River Energy line location is a little controversial. We'll probably have some people testify for that, but we're working through that. Township officers was a good group of people. Had a good turnout, I thought, that night. Nice little program. AMC was also mentioned. Nice to see us get an award. County ditch 56 discussion, talking about the lake over there and the county ditch run into there and how we're going to deal with some clean water issues. Mark mentioned MICA. That got a lot of reports, did four of our platform items, right? Four of them we got approved, and then we'll do the rest next month. And then we do have the annual meeting come one up. Yesterday had my MRCI meeting, finance committee meeting first. We approved the budget, and then the regular meeting got an update on all the things we have going on there. And we are, just like everyone else, having a hard time finding people to work for us. But we are up to, our goal is to get a couple hundred vans to help provide our services, and I think we have about 30 or 40 at this point. So we're getting there. We're doing a lot of neat things at that organization and got some buildings sold, and it's basically just out on the road project at this point. And then our ditch 36 meeting this morning. And that brings me up to today. Anything else for the good of the order today? Motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
Got our first and a second to recess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We'll see you all tonight at 6:00 PM. Or no, lunch next.
Lunch.
Up town, and then?
Lunch, and then we got our 2 o'clock.
Yep. Lunch at Swiss and Madison, and then our 2 o'clock event, and then back here at 6 for the truth in taxation hearing.
Yep.
We adjourned. Thank you, everybody.